Good evening, everybody. Welcome to regular meeting agenda on Monday, June tenth, starting at seven oh one and we'll do roll call.
Council President Valerie Rye Faller here. Council Vice President Diane Law here. Council Member Shirley Blair Kohler is absent. Council Member Brooke Bruchette Williams is online. Council Member Deb Costini Pine here. Council Member Andrea Dantillo here and Council Member Jay Dorn.
Here.
And Mayor Paul Gamrat.
Here.
Thank you. Now we will stand if you're able to for the question. I'm leaving them to the public.
All right, and we will start with a public comment. I see, we have lots of people here and we also have one, two, three, four, five people online, six people online now that have joined us. So it will start with the room first. If you would like to speak, um, please come up here and state your name and your address. Go one, goodbye. All right, we'll move on to online. If you would like to speak, please raise your virtual zoom hand and we will call you. Look, mom, no hands. That's okay. It's okay. We're a little shy today. It's all right. Uh, okay, we will close public comment. I don't see any hands being raised on there. All right. And we will move to our items.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from May sixth, twenty twenty four.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
He was thinking to me, he just completely ruined it all for me.
Yeah.
He does that.
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
A motion to accept the meeting minutes from the May sixth, twenty twenty four workshop meeting and the regular council meeting held on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
There's second, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And it passes. And the mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah.
Chief Ron Radley has reported to me that there were no significant incidents during the month of May twenty twenty four. Our officers handled a total of one thousand fifty-two events, four thousand eight oh seven for the year, consisting of both calls for service and proactive patrol engagements engagements in detail, resulting in known rest, no arrests. The total number of arrests for the year stands at twenty-three. The department's three police vehicles logged a total of four thousand seven hundred forty-five miles. The combined year-to-date total is now twenty-one thousand two hundred sixty-four miles. Car nine, the two thousand thirteen Ford Ford Taurus sedan is out of service. Currently, two vehicles are out of service. One mechanic, he had one due to an accident. Car seven, the two thousand twenty-two Dodge Durango is almost completed and ready to be put on, to be put back on service. I believe it is in service now.
Uh, it will be Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, the ticket summary for the month of May twenty-four was seventy-two, two non-traffic tickets, five parking tickets, and sixty-five traffic tickets. Chief is pleased to announce that the installation of our solar-powered electronic street signs has been completed, with two signs fully operational. Sign number one is located in the fourteen-hundred block of Beulah Road, facing the southbound traffic. Sign, sign number two is located in the twenty-five-hundred block of Greensburg Pike, near the Woodsland Hills High School, also facing southbound traffic. The signs are quite complex and they are capable of collecting a significant amount of data that can be retrieved and analyzed. The primary function of the signs is to help to mitigate excessive speeding. In addition, the signs can be used to display additional messages to motorists such as amber alerts or warn of hazards ahead. The signs are controlled by the police department, primarily via remote internet access with data contained in an iCloud-based storage. Our congratulations go out to Officer Chris Christopher Lewandowski, who recently and successfully completed required training and is now certified as a drug recognition expert, DER. The three-week course is demanding and rigorous, as evidenced by the fact that the course reports only an eighty percent pass rate, with just thirty officers currently certified throughout Western Pennsylvania. The training focuses on DUI enforcement where drivers are impaired by narcotics or other controlled substances, which is becoming extremely common. The skills gardeners, gardeners allow for the DRE officer to conduct an extensive series of advanced testing to not only determine impairment, but also though as far as the judgment, with much accuracy and precision, the exact type of substance an individual is under the influence of. The DRE analysis and testimony has become a cornerstone of successful criminal prosecutions of DUI-controlled impairment. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of May twenty twenty four are reported on attached police department reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, motion to accept the mayor's report for May twenty twenty four. Is second?
Any discussion? Second. Yeah. Any discussion? I think it's amazing that he is one of the thirty in Western Pennsylvania. That's incredible. Who doesn't like him?
And I talked to him and he was telling me about the training. He was over in Philadelphia, where they actually go out on the streets and and interact with with people who are on drugs, you know, to figure out what what are they on? But it's not always alcohol, could be some other type of drug.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? And it passes and then we'll do the proclamation.
That is my pledge.
Yeah.
To present this proclamation for the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Churchill Garden Club. And uh, call out some of the members here. We have right now forty-two members in our. Wait. Get pictures too. Yeah, this is um, Churchill Borough Office of Counsel and Mayor. Whereas, a proclamation celebrating Churchill Garden's seventy-fifth anniversary. Whereas Audrey Hepburn once said, "To plan a garden is the dream of tomorrow." And whereas that quote directly correlates to the Churchill Garden Club's values over the past seventy-five years. And whereas founded in nineteen forty-nine, the Churchill Garden Club aims to develop an interest in artistic design, promote horticulture, and perform community service. And whereas since its inception, the garden club has been dedicated to beautifying Churchill Borough by planting shrubs and trees, promoting home flower gardens, and organizing a monthly litter pickup, just to name a few. And whereas over the years, the fifty-member club has offered additional classes to promote horticulture and has awarded scholarships to students interested in becoming horticulturists. And now therefore be resolved that I, the Churchill Borough Mayor Paul Gamrat, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Churchill Garden Club upon its seventy-fifth anniversary and thank the Churchill Garden Club for its dedication and the beautification of the borough and being an inspire, an inspiration to others in our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto caused the seal of the Borough of Churchill to be affixed this tenth day of June, two thousand twenty-four.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you for that. That was, that was beautiful.
Thank you.
I think you all probably what you do.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you.
Madam President, motion to accept the treasurer's report on May thirty-first, twenty twenty four, and directing the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough of Churchill accrued since May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second, your second? Any discussion?
And it's always been three dollars bills. Alkazan, forty thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. Gateway, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Big Lea, and escaping a construction, twenty-two thousand six hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Ayes.
Opposed? And it passes. Moving on to our action items. Madam President, I move to approve the road diet of Beulah Road by PennDOT. There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We talked about this last last meeting. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Thank you. Moving on to our second item.
Madam President, motion to authorize the Borough Manager to advertise in ordinance amending chapter two four six sewers of the Churchill Code to explicitly exempt unlocked or equivalent sewage facilities that have been permitted by the Allegheny County Health Department from the borough's sanitary sewer lateral testing requirements.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
And it passes. Moving on to our next item.
Madam President, I most authorize the Borough Manager to write a letter to the South Western Pennsylvania Commission requesting them to conduct a road study of Greensburg.
There a second? Second. Any discussion?
I shared my thoughts and feelings about this last week. I'm not in support of um, looking at a road study on Greensburg Pike. I think at this particular point, the focus needs to remain on Beulah Road. Um, you know, I think the work for the infrastructure committee on the road diet study is the start, but really not the finish line. Um, so I think that that needs to be our primary focus right now.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Moving on to our next item.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number four six zero two, updating the amount requested for the statewide local share assessment grant program.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam President, I move to approve the twenty twenty-four Churchill Borough Paving Program.
Is there a second?
I just need to clarify, I wanted to approve the paving program. What exactly? Here, there's a, there's a base bid and alternate. So I think you want to include in your motion whether or not you're specifically which, which portion you're proposing to approve.
It is approved.
Well, I think that implies that you're approving the alternate.
Okay.
And I don't know, based on conversations that we were having today, whether or not that's the recommendation from staff, so maybe, maybe we might have turned it over to, we should talk about the the paving program.
Sure, yeah. Um, you know, due to some availability of liquid fuels funds at this time, uh, it is the recommendation to uh, from staff that council makes a motion to accept the base bid.
Yeah, that's okay. So you can redo the.
Yeah. Okay. Um, uh, I moved to adopt what, we're right here. Number five move to, uh, turn the page to.
Yeah.
I understand. Um, I moved to approve the twenty twenty-four Churchill Borough Paving Program excluding the um, the alternate, the bit alternate.
We're only approving the basis. Okay, that's what the motion is. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So just on this one, um, approving just the base bits, everyone knows what that is. That is a full-depth restoration on the grade. That's only one half of the lane, but through our kind of studies, we found that we think there's significant subbase and subgrade failure there. So that's going to get you an overall better product and a longer lasting product. So for that portion, you might look at it and think it might be a higher number, but that is getting a really, really quality product.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Um, my thoughts on the paving program for this particular year. There, has there been an update regarding the liquid fuels audit and where we stand with that?
There has not been.
Okay. Um, so given that there has not been an update as to where we stand with the liquid fuels audit, what was shared with us last week is that this bid would be good for six months. Um, I'm not.
Sixty days.
Oh, sixty days, excuse me. Well, sixty days. I'm not in support of moving forward with the paving program until we are clear about the liquid fuels monies and whether or not, you know, the audit will shake out in our favor. Uh, we did allocate a hundred thousand dollars for paving. However, the base.
Which covers McCready Road.
Excuse me?
Is, I think the the hundred thousand dollars would cover McCready Road.
It would cover a portion of McCready Road. I believe the bid is a hundred and ten and there, is there a possibility that the bid can go up?
I mean, it should not go up.
Yeah, it shouldn't go up.
It could be lower, yeah. It historically.
This is the bid. It certainly doesn't go.
There's some really unique situations where there can be slight increases due to, by too much uh, materials pricing, but I don't anticipate that's going to be the case here. So the contract is locked into that base bid. I will say, uh, we had some discussions about potentially delaying acceptance on conversation with the borough engineer. Uh, manager, Borough Manager can can certainly elaborate on this, but my conversation uh, was there, there was a concern by a delay that we could potentially risk not having even the base bid completed before the weather turns at the end of the year. So that is something uh, that we did explore as a possibility, hoping we'd have some additional information. Um, we also, I don't think, have a real kind of confidence that we're going to have more concrete information on the audit issue in the, in the next couple of weeks. And that, that's about as far, I think, as the borough, the borough engineer would have been comfortable, I think, pushing the acceptance back. So we do, that is, that is the uh, Mr. Flynn's recommendation. Tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, so again, I just feel that at this particular point, we should delay moving forward with the paving program until we have additional clarity about the liquid fuels funds and whether or not um, there needs to be any reimbursement on our end for those funds. Um, the bid is good for sixty days and so the work will be done, you know, um, even if we do delay it by a month or so to give.
Or.
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily.
Well, in a conversation with I had with the borough engineer, uh, there was a possibility that if we did delay um, voting on it, that there is a possibility that the project would not get done this year because they would not proceed with the work, given the weather conditions. Even though they did, it was bid it out this year. It doesn't mean they have to complete it, complete it this year. Uh, if they feel that the weather isn't appropriate, they would not proceed. And the engineer said that they would advise that they didn't proceed, given the weather situation as well.
And just, even if it requires it to be delayed until next year. Again, I feel that we need to know financially where we are before we commit ourselves to paying for a paving program this year. Um, so my vote is to delay and you all can vote, you know, how you choose.
Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
And it passes. Moving on to our next item.
Madam President, motion to adopt board number seven three three, increasing the fines for violations of chapter one three three, beating a wild game, the code of the Borough of Churchill.
Second, any discussion?
I think we talked about it and the why, you know, that's, that's. Please don't beat the law.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And it carries. And moving on to our next item.
Madam President, motion to approve the implement, implementation of the Yeagle Community Center policy.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And we talked, we've been talking about this, but all right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. And we will move on to our discussion items. Need staff, support team report. I always start with Denny, but Denny is not here.
Yeah, Denny said to use this time to introduce myself, he goes, obviously.
This is perfect.
So I'm standing in for Denny. I work for Gateway Engineers on civil affairs as well. Um, I'm carrying a lot of the management on the audit stuff for your guys, for your community. Um, so I'll be in and out kind of to help backfill anyone who needs help. And that's kind of what I'm doing here. Our engineering report was submitted on June seventh and if there's any questions, we'd be willing to pop up them that inside of the press.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually negated it quick in the mayor's report that um, which was pretty significant. We had our first joint DUI checkpoint with Wilkins Township. It's, we've been part of the uh, East Hills Pedestrian Traffic Safety Alliance. It used to be the East Hills DUI Task Force, but it's through P, PA DUI Association. Uh, we've been with them for two years. We do a lot of aggressive driving details, DUI rowing controls. This was the first checkpoint, liquor ticket, pedestrian, um, safety. So this was our first checkpoint. It was uh, very successful. I mean, successful as far, you don't like to see that many DUIs, but in four hours' time, we had nine DUIs.
Wow. That's one of the things that you got them out of the road.
Six coming out. We did it at the Elks Park. The Elks lot closed that night and I allowed us to use their lot. Um, there, it's, it's, it's quite extensive. We have um, a command truck there for the rego. We have two lobotomists there. We had Officer Lewandowsky's performing his first series of DRE tests with Officer Wilson from O'Hara Township. Um, so it was, it was an extensive setup. It was, it was four hours. Um, I don't have the stats on how many cars they stopped, but um, yeah, six DUIs coming southbound on Beulah of Churchill, three going north out of Wilkins. Um, so all in all, again, you don't certainly like to see that, but in hindsight, looking back, you know, the enforcement was, was impactful and it was certainly a time well spent, so.
I'm questioning, what did you originally stop them for?
Well, a checkpoint establishes.
That ran them all over?
Right, yeah. So checkpoints are established. Uh, it's under PA state law and there's a lot of laws that govern it. But you have to announce it so many days. There's a process. And then once you establish it, you typically determine that you're going to stop every car, every third car, every fifth car, unless you see an obvious violation, there's fire tags, uh, and obviously impaired driver. So the officers on the line, there were twelve officers on the line, they would make contact with the motorists if they had obvious impairment, uh, where they needed further evaluation, they would pull them into Elks Parking Lot, have next vehicle submit field sobriety testing. Um, we had no other arrests that I can think. We had no drug arrests, no warrant arrests, no firearm arrests. They were all DUIs.
Right.
Good stuff.
Thank you. Great question. That's good. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, was it your broccoli on? No, it's on the kitchen. Hi, it's your vacation now. You're going to watch the doctor. Um, yeah. How can you dish them, Madam President? Gavin?
I have nothing to report to see you, Madam President.
All right.
I would like to, this is the first month that we received reports back from Mount Lebanon for the tunneling report. And it does look a little different. Like, yeah, take a look at that. We're still trying to find ways to perfect it and just improve the report in general. So it looks a little different this month, you know, but just still working good, but it is, so.
Good. Thank you. So if y'all have any comments?
I should be back.
Yeah. Perfect time for feedback. Any, well, we'll move to council members. Any comments?
I have a couple.
Yeah, please, as usual. Um,
grabbing in Woodland Hills latest issue. Um, there's a really nice article about Churchill's ninetieth. Um, they did a really nice job, so we can be very proud of that. Um, I want to thank all our residents who came Friday for ninety celebration in the Yeagle Room. It was really terrific to see so many people show up and um, it was just a lot of fun. So I want to thank everybody for stopping by. I think we all had a really good time.
Free cake and ice cream.
Free cake and. What else did you want? Um, and and lots of finger food and and all that. So that was, that was great. Um, as far as our deer committee at Hawk Deer Committing, uh, mark your calendars, August eleventh, we're going to have a tongue meeting at the Black Forest Civic Association. And this is to discuss the finding that the three gentlemen that are our experts who have been doing research and and just going through all this for the past few months, they're going to, you know, talk to us about what, that's what we can do uh, since they can give us on how to handle the deer if they're eating your flowers, the whole bit. So that, mark your calendar for August eleventh for that. And I also want to give a shout out to Greg, um, Predonovich. He is one of the deer committee members and he has really worked tirelessly. In fact, he is going to begin, he's been, Ashley's been, uh, he's been helping Ashley. We're going to have like a weekly, I guess it's a sort of, you know, did you know type of things, plant this, don't plant that, just some tips to, every week you're going to see it. I, Ashley, and you can say more about that. I think it's every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday we'll make a new post, uh, you know, just some information about the deer and what you could do.
What you can do. Every week. So that's something leading up to this meeting and then beyond the meeting. So he, he even showed me some nice pictures of plants and, you know, you know, don't do this, do that, you know, that type of thing, just to, just to kind of give everybody some information to help them out. And uh, don't forget August tenth is our community day. Our newsletter will be, by the next meeting, we, we hope to have our newsletter out or at least posted that. So look for our newsletter to come out sometime beginning of July. Thank you.
For the safety.
For the safety? Yeah, I just want to take a minute to uh, say how impressed I am and how proud I am about how our police department and our fire department have been reaching out and interacting with the larger um, public safety community. And the fact that Chris took this course and was certified as an example, a leadership of our chief and his encouragement of our police officers to expand their skills and their recognition. And I was going to mention that. Thank you.
I just want to thank Deb, the red board, the staff. It was another great event. I mean, the hard work that goes into that, it, it's not easy. And getting everything together and throwing such a wonderful event. And thank you for coming out. Um, they really work tirelessly to try and do nice things for us. And we, we're so proud of our community. We're so proud that you're a part of it. So thank you.
Well, I also want to say Ashley and Jacob, our intern, put a lot of work in, and our red board, of course, but also Ja, uh, Jacob was very helpful in in doing all, a lot of the minutia, get this, get that, move this, do that, whatever. He, he got it all together with that, you know, with Ashley's help. And I really appreciate that. It's nice to be young. Yeah. It's a group effort. Thank you.
So I, I will make my last statement and I'll turn it to whoever.
Yeah.
So. Uh, so, um, in two thousand and ten, uh, my neighbor Cheryl McAdoo and former president, uh, uh, Tom Coffo called me to be on the council. I, and I did not realize what they meant by that. Uh, like most of you, right? I would have probably done something else. Uh, I have watched this council change multiple times over the years, right? Every couple of years, we get a new person here, a new person there. Uh, gone from the the Dick Farrell's and the and the the uh, the Lyric the P's of the world uh, to to now the Valerie's and and the dead. This has been a really special place. Right? Churchill is a really special place. Churchill Council is a special place. We are lucky to have the council people that we have and the kind of council that we have. I've watched other councils. I used to have an employee who was the president of Braddock Council, right? I I've gone to them. I've watched other councils go through tough times and how they've managed it. And I've watched this council go through tough times and how we've managed it. Right? I've got neighbors who, although I got a couple that don't talk to me since the Amazon day. But I mean, as a community, this has been my pleasure to serve this space. It's been fourteen years. My daughter showed up here. Uh, when I, when I started, she was not born. Right? At five, she came and gave gave a speech in front of the council. Um, she, she is pissed off about a lot of things that I do here. Uh, she doesn't think I do enough on the environment. Um, it's hence the generation. But, you know, I'm getting to the point and everybody knows, you know, that we need someone who can dedicate the time and energy that this community deserves. And that was when I got here, I was putting in full-time hours, quite frankly, if you guys know how this is. And I I don't think that I can give it what it deserves anymore. So everybody on council knows, you know, I stepped down from even looking at considering the presidency. And now I think this is my last kind of meeting as as a council person. There's still some things to do, so I'll tender my official resignation, I think, after a couple of things you want to get done outside of this. Uh, but I will, I turned fifty-five and that's on camera in in July. And I will, I will be in the audience, right, with lots of questions over time.
Please don't.
For those of you who don't know, I have a style. It goes like this. It goes like, oh, I have a question. But I wish all of you the best luck. I thank all of you for the work that you have done, the time that you put in with me, dealing with me. Those of you who don't know me, I'm very difficult to deal with. Right? Those of you who have tried to deal with me.
You said it, I didn't.
I'm, listen, leadership can be, can be hard, right? Tough decisions are hard. Uh, it's yours to deal with now. But I just, I just wanted to say to everybody, thank you for for letting me be on council, for giving me the time of being president, for giving me the privilege of serving Churchill. And for those of you who have had to deal with me, uh, I'll look at each one of you.
Everybody's like, oh, God.
I, I thank you all, and I I will close my my small little monologue with, I just have one question. What do you think of Casa? My, my daughter told me this. No, but thank you all, and this, this is my, my final go, so I just appreciate it, but that's my.
I served as vice president uh under Jay's leadership for ten years. And we went through some very thick times. Uh, two major crises during that period of time. Uh, it is hard for me to describe what he has done uh to promote this borough publicly and not publicly. And uh, an awful lot of what we're hearing here about how, what this, what this uh council has accomplished and reputation that we have uh beyond our role is due to Dave Doran. And uh, I want to give a special thank you to to them.
Well, after all that, Paul, you would like to say some, something, Mr. Mayor? Yes, please do.
I want to thank Council for allowing me to have the time to present the proclamation to our garden. I failed to recognize Alona, our current president. Um, when she came up and and accepted the proclamation, but back at the Soul Garden Club members. And uh, I don't need Gillette back in the corner, Sheriff Betroy, Nancy will be our next president for next year. So I wanted to tell you, Joey Parker and and my wife, Bette.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, just a couple more things, um, I want to recognize them. Just recently, I read that the governor had signed into a law, the cellphone, sent it onto the chief. He had a couple comments about it, so. You know, we talked a lot about that in public uh safety, by driving distracted, whether it's combing your hair. Cellphone has got to be the number one thing. Every time you look around, someone's got, trying to make a turn with a cellphone in hand. So now that it's the law, I'm sure how we're going to force it, but, you know, it's the law. Um, I got a phone call from Larry DiPede today, wanted me to mention to council the great work that he believes that Scott Stonebreaker done, doing some work over on Holland Road. The tree that fell down somewhere, he called, you know, had been not addressed for a while. He called Scott, Scott came over and expedited the whole thing, so that's all taken care of. We have a citation, this came from Abigail Salisbury. When we had our seventy-fifth, no, I'm sorry, uh, I'm getting confused with numbers, our ninetieth anniversary over in the Yeagle Room last Friday. Abigail read the citation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, um, but Michelle, when I get the right pictures, Stuart, that you had posted that, that I did videotape it on our Facebook page and the pictures, I took the pictures as well, so that'll be coming up. And uh, the last thing I want to mention is, Chief didn't talk about, I know we're real close to getting two new officers.
Yeah, I mean, we have two uh solid candidates. Obviously, it'd be up to council whether we hire one or both, but um everything looks uh, looks good. They're in the the finals stages of the process, um, so I I sent an email out today. We'll discuss with management and government and hopefully by the July meeting, we'll have, you know, one or two officers.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, uh. Make a motion to adjourn. All right, let's be done, so thirty-eight. Thank you all. Have a good night.